Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 7:30. This is the regular council meeting for September 8th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Protemblis. Councilwoman Fleming?
Here.
Councilwoman Muir?
Here.
Councilor Rorback?
Here.
Councilwoman Soltis? Councilor Wright?
Here.
Mayor Graffstein?
I am here. Can I please get a motion to excuse Mayor Protemblis and Councilwoman Soltis? They did give notice.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mayor Protemblis and Councilwoman Soltis.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Uh, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries, they are excused. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by Councilor Rorback. I invite you to stand if you would like.
Let us begin tonight in a spirit of reflection and purpose. I'm reminded of President John F. Kennedy's words spoken on this day 60 years ago, that we choose to go to the moon in this decade and other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Today, we gather with that same spirit to take on the difficult challenges of our community, not shying away from the hard work, but embracing it with courage, creativity, and hope. May this council be guided by wisdom and humility. May each decision be made with the common good in mind, and may our efforts, like that bold journey to the moon, inspire progress, unity, and possibility for all who call the city home. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. First up is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening? All right, seeing none, we're going to move into presentations. First presentation is from the Community Connect.
Fire Chief Greg Alito is here tonight to talk about the Community Connect program from the Fire Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's probably a great thing that we have a full house today so they can hear about our Community Connect. I am pleased to introduce the new initiative the Fire Department is implementing called Community Connect. Community Connect is the most significant outreach program our department has ever launched, with the goal of reaching every resident, business, and property owner in our community. Community Connect is a secure online platform that lets residents and businesses share information directly with the Fire Department. This data gives our firefighters and paramedics vital details that improves the department's response, boosts safeties for both the occupants and the responders, and leads to better outcomes during emergencies. For residents, this might include details about a family member with medical or mobility needs, pets in their home, or access points such as locks, boxes, and door codes. For businesses, it could include contact information, building layouts, fire systems, and hazardous materials on site. Having this information before we arrive allows our crews to make a faster, safer, and more informed decision, enhancing our capabilities to protect lives, property, or even our firefighters. This program is simple to use. The residents and businesses create a secure account, add the information they find important, and we will do the rest. Every year, a reminder will go out and ask for the residents and businesses to verify the information is correct, and then you can update more. In short, Community Connect strengthens our partnerships with the community and helps ensure a faster, safest, and most efficient emergency response. I'm going to show you back here, this TV monitor's not working right now, but back here, it's got a short, two-minute presentation that illustrates a little bit more what the program has to offer.
At your corporate EMS agency, we are here to ensure we do whatever it takes to protect you and your family. However, there are many valuable pieces of critical information that can help save lives and property in a real emergency that we don't know until we arrive at your door. Things like how many occupants do you expect at your home, if anyone has access or functional needs, or speaks another language, whether or not you have pets or livestock, structural details like where the bedrooms are, or even where hazardous materials may be located. But now, with Community Connect, you have the power to keep us informed of nearly everything that matters, so we can better serve you in emergency strikes. Community Connect is a safe and secure online program, available at no cost to all residents, that allows you to provide us with critical property and occupant information that we can access at a time of response, leading to better outcomes in case of fire or medical emergency. So, what are some examples of the kind of information you can contribute? First, your family members. Who lives in your residence and how they get in touch during an emergency? Next, your property. Things like where your family's bedrooms are located, your gate and door codes, if you have a pool or basement, how to shut off water and electricity, and even where your family's emergency meeting place is located. Your needs. Details regarding functional needs like mobility, Alzheimer's, autism, severe allergies, visual or hearing impairments, and more. And last, but not least, your pets. Their picture, their names, their habits, and even their veterinary information. So no matter what happens, your very family members are always known about and taken care of. Signing up is easy. From any internet connected device, it just takes a phone number, email, and an address. Rest assured, all of your data is safe and only available to our first responders during the time of response, using the same data security and encryption standards found in online banking. If you have five minutes to sign up, please select the link to create your profile and get started helping your first responders help you.
So, that is a little brief overview of the program. We have a couple different ways that community, the residents and businesses can sign on. You can go to the city's website under the Fire Department page. The very first tab will say Community Connect, and it will take you to our website where it tells you to register. We also will be handing out flyers at a lot of events that will have a QR code along with the website and more information. We'll be handing those out also. We also partner with Michigan Schools and Governments Credit Union. Anyone that signs up before August 1st, we're going to do a random selection. We have 24 fire blankets that we'll be handing out. So, it's a little incentive to sign up now. So, anyone before October 1st, we'll just random select 24 people. We have your, we'll have your address, your phone number, and your email, so we'll get ahold of you to give those out. So, any questions?
Any question? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Yes.
Where will you be September 13th?
Thank you. At Revenant Heights. We'll be out there. The Fire Department will have several apparatus. We're going to have a lot of, like, kids can spray fire hose, we'll have fire helmets. We're going to do, we'll have you take it around the truck. We'll also have these flyers to hand out, and you can meet the firefighters in your community and ask questions. So, please come out to Revenant Heights on the 13th. Thank you for that reminder.
No problem. I got you.
All right.
Any questions, comments, counsel? Any residents have questions? All right, thank you, Chief Alito. And, yeah, on the 13th, there's Revenant Heights, and there's also the Fire Station Open House. Come get information there. Next up, we have from the Director of Public Services, the Summer Beautification Awards.
Good evening, Mayor Graffstein, members of council, and all our good residents who are here. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Beautification Committee, which consists of the Active Adult Advisory Board, as well as staff from the AAC and DPS, to present the 2025 Summer Beautification Awards. As in years past, we were presented with some incredible nominations and really splendid displays while we were out on our drive, which was the morning of July 21st. Coming up with the winner is a very hard decision when so many people put such care and effort into the upkeep and beautification of their homes. And in the end, it really does all come down to the final aggregate scoring from the committee. So, I'm pleased to announce, I'd like to introduce our first-place winner, who is Michael Jurick of 1817 Elliott. Michael, are you here? As you can see by this picture, layers and levels of different colors absolutely abound, with mounds of flowers complementing the meticulously-kept trees and shrubs. The harsh lines of the porch and sidewalks are well-contrasted by the gentle curves of the rock border, and of course, the concrete man clawing to the surface next to the porch is a sure conversation starter. He's there if you look for him. I'm pleased to present this certificate of appreciation from our mayor and council. As well as a gift card to Charlie's Restaurant located at 12 Campbell. If you'd like to approach the podium and see the congratulations from your council. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you very much. In a very close second, please, may I present Gerald and Tina Harton of 368 Sonia. Are you here? So, we've got frogs, gnomes, and birds of all kinds. That's just some of the garden knickknacks that are hiding amongst the flowers. The front of this house explodes with color. Out of room in the garden? Try an extra pot, or 12 or so, here and there. This garden, hmm? Love it. This garden shows there is absolutely no such thing as too many healthy and colorful plants, and the resulting effect is absolutely stunning. By way of our congratulations and thank you, I present you with this certificate of appreciation from our mayor and council. As well as a gift card to Charlie's Restaurant, which is also located at 12 Campbell. And now, I'd like to play a brief presentation of the 2025 winners and nominees. Is that a jam or what? So, once again, I'd like to thank everyone who participated in our 2025 Beautification Awards and the countless residents who take that extra step, time, and care to keep the neighborhoods and our city looking great. As I said in the slideshow, the Beautification Committee will be back in December looking at holiday lights and decorations. We have that drive-through date, which will be coming in the next Madison Heights Happenings, Madison Heights Matters, and the CNG News. So, keep an eye out to that, and be sure to send those nominations to DPS. Congratulations again to this year's winners, and thank you very much.
And I'd like to say thank you to everyone who works on making their home beautiful. The more work you do, the better it is for the rest of us. So, thank you so much for all you do. Our next item is interest open to the public. So, this is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak. We have a full room. If everybody wishes to speak, that's fine. Everybody will get their three minutes. Just ask that you go to the podium. There's some going, so, just ask that you go to the podium, and just give your name, address, and affiliation with the city, all right, and adjust your comments to me, please, all right? And if you need to adjust the microphone, you can do that as well.
Okay.
Yep, you're fine.
Well, good evening. I'm Kathy Sapia, a 50-year resident of the neighborhood made up of Dartmouth, Carom Drive, and Bel Air Streets. We are here again, for the fifth time over two years, to oppose the proposed expansion project on Dartmouth. Money, money, money. Money makes the world go around. We were invited to a pizza party. I think that piece of pizza would have cost us about at least a $50,000 drop in our home values. This would be due to increased traffic of 160 cars going in and out of the proposed alley, and in the morning, of truck deliveries and garbage pickups for the proposed restaurant. This expansion will negatively impact our neighborhood. We want to preserve the character of our neighborhood. Since Marinelli's left about 15 years ago, traffic has increased, that's normal, and the new interchange diamond design has made a major change in 12-mile traffic patterns. Cars coming from the east can't turn left into the proposed restaurant, so they have to back up and use the alley off of Dartmouth. People who come from the west can't leave on 12 Mile, so they have to use the alley out of Dartmouth again. It's 160 cars. It's time to just say no. At the August 19 Planning Commission meeting, Mr. Nager made a point of what a good neighbor he is by cleaning up the Shell gas station he bought and the Tropical Sunrise Strip Mall he owns. Well, sir, you're supposed to keep it clean. That's not hero stuff. You're supposed to do that. Does a good neighbor buy and demolish a house for more parking and alley access? No. Does a good neighbor reroute 160 cars onto a neighborhood street because a new street design doesn't fit his needs? No. 30 years ago, when I taught school, the school administration came up with this idea. Every time a student comes to your class with their book and pencil, they get a Jolly Rancher. I said, "They're supposed to have their book and pencil." Tonight, all the neighbors of Dartmouth, Carom Drive, and Bel Air Streets are here because they care about their neighborhoods, peace, stability, and enjoyment. They are supposed to be here, but more importantly, they are entitled to be here. City council members, you are supposed to show support for a neighborhood's continuity and safety. Neighbors versus major corporation. All we want is fairness with this proposal that will have a major impact on our neighborhood. Nager Company, figure out something else. This property just can't support what you want from it. No Jolly Ranchers for anyone tonight. Just do the right thing and say no to the proposed expansion on Dartmouth Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Timothy Gunster, 28757 Dartmouth, my adjacent, the property that this young lady was talking about. My question is probably more of a question. If I were to put my house up for sale tomorrow, would I have to disclose that this is going on? More of a city attorney question, maybe? Or if you approved it?
I can't give legal advice on that, but...
So, unfortunately, we can't give you any legal advice tonight.
Okay, so, it's just like if somebody bought my house tomorrow.
If you want to put, if you want to put your house up, if you want to put your house up for sale tomorrow, the best person to talk to about that would be the Realtor that you're using.
Okay, so the family that would buy it wouldn't have any idea what's going on?
So, the best person to talk to would be your Realtor. Unfortunately, we cannot give you legal advice.
My name is Alice McCag. I live at 612 West Gerard Avenue, next to the church at 510 West Gerard. When I bought my house 26 years ago, I bought a house next to a church. I did not buy a house next to a school. So, I have some concerns about having a school on the church property. One of my concerns, I think, has been, I thought, I originally thought they were going to build a school, and so I was very concerned about having groundwater pushed onto my property, because that is a problem in our area. But I understand that's not going to happen at this time. I share a 280-foot-long fence with the churchyard. A couple of my concerns are about that fence. I'm concerned about when there are children at the property all week long. I'm concerned about them reaching through the fence for my rescue dog Riley. And I am concerned about children climbing the fence to retrieve a ball they may have accidentally thrown or hit into my yard. And that's, I'm concerned about liability. I don't want kids climbing the fence and getting hurt because they're coming into my yard. I'm also very concerned about the playground mentioned in the proposal. There is nothing specific that's listed about that playground. My bedrooms are on the east end of my house, which is the end closest to the churchyard, and I do not want to have playgrounds or basketball courts or whatever, any kind of equipment, right outside my bedroom window. Any playground equipment that's built at some time in the future is going to attract other children, not children who go to the school, but it's going to attract neighborhood children to the spot. And so, I'm very concerned about having that, that noise outside my bedroom. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Okay, so tonight, I would like to speak to you in regards to the proposed rezoning of the property at 500 West Gardena, which opens up to my backyard. I do believe that the specific property in question has already been removed from tonight's agenda. However, I still would like to speak, just to give some background on it. The current proposal would seek to rezone the property from R3 Single Family Residential to RMN Residential Mixed Neighborhood. This would allow for the development of condos and townhomes, and while we understand and support the city's broader initiative to repurpose underutilized properties and expand workforce housing, we believe that this specific property does not align with the character and layout of our neighborhood. The property in question extends well beyond Gardena. It actually runs nearly the full length of Dartmouth Street, and I hope you guys have had a chance to check out that property in person. This is currently a quiet, single-family residential block. Rezoning the entire parcel to RMN would significantly alter the fabric of our neighborhood and increase density in an area that is simply not suited for multifamily residential dwellings. The church has already expressed interest in selling off the side lot due to financial hardship, and this could lead to further development and displacement if not carefully managed. Our neighborhood's proposal, we are not opposed to thoughtful development. We support rezoning proposals PRZN 25-1 through 25-4, as well as 25-6, which are located along major roads and better suited for multifamily housing. We do request that PRZN 25-5 be removed or amended to reflect a more balanced approach, maintaining the R3 zoning on the Dartmouth-facing property. We urge the city council to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to remove the proposed property from the rezoning plan and allow it to be reviewed as part of the city's master plan, which is currently underway. I do believe that this will help ensure that development respects the existing character of Dartmouth Street, and it will also help engage with our residents in ongoing discussion about the neighborhood planning and development. I have submitted a petition. There are only 185 signatures, but I want you to know that those 185 were from the families directly around this property. During our canvassing, we did only come across one family who was unwilling to sign. So, that tells you how many people along Dezing Drive, Dartmouth, Gardena, Bel Air are opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ann Erickson-Galt. I'm the county commissioner representing Madison Heights, as well as Hazel Park and part of Troy. I'm just here to give a little update on what's happening at the county. We're heading into approving our budget for the fiscal year that begins October 1st, and despite what you might have heard through the grapevine, I want to assure you that I am working very hard on making sure that we have continued funding for the co-responder program, to make sure that we have trained mental health professionals that are able to go out with your police officers and help people who are having mental health crisis. It's a wonderful program. We believe in it strongly, and we want to make sure that that funding exists for at least another year. I heard that there was some concern about the community development block grant funding, and I'm looking into that to try to figure out how we can try to get, I don't have an answer yet, but I'm working on that. And then, last but not least, there is a program that the county launched about a year ago. It's called SAVI. It is a student debt relief program. Anybody who lives in the county or works for Oakland County can sign up for the program, but you need to do that soon. It ends September 30th. If you have student debt, or you have a family member of student debt, you're a parent who has taken out debt for your children for their college education, you qualify. It is free for a year of service from SAVI. What SAVI does is helps you go out and look for ways to reduce your student loan, or in some case, even get it forgiven. So far, we've had an average of $150, $40 a month savings on average among people who've signed up for it. 26 million total in student loan debt forgiven on behalf of Oakland County residents or workers, with an average of about $40,000 You can go to oakgov.com, go to the Community tab, scroll down to Student Debt Relief, and you'll learn what you need. And there is a workshop coming up on September 18th. So I'm going to stick around after the meeting. If anybody has any other questions about the county, I'll be happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, I'm nervous.
You're fine.
I noticed a recent camera that was put up on the corner of 12 Mile and John R. by the Big B's. I noticed it because it was very distinct. I recognize it as a Flock camera. I had called the police department, asked them what it was for, and they said it was, quote, "a license plate reader." However, from my personal experience and what I looked into and more, that doesn't seem entirely accurate. It seems to be an AI camera. I checked Flock's own website, and they had several statements confirming my suspicions. Quote, "No plate, no problem. Turn images into actual evidence, no plate required." And another statement, "Flock enables searches based on everyday language," such as, quote, "white sports car with racing stripe," or, quote, "red pickup truck with dog in bed." This does not sound like a license plate reader. This is an AI camera. And furthermore, anyone who knows anything about AI would know that, quote, "the term AI is a bit misleading, as there is no intelligence. It is just based off of pattern recognition." And if this can be used to search for cars, it can also be used for other purposes, search for people. If prompting is this easy, you could easily use these AI cameras to search for people or other terms. Furthermore, I also have security terms, because Flock also makes a statement, quote, "Flock maintains a license to access customer data" on their website. Now, they have claimed this is only to do their job. However, as we have seen from security companies, often this data is stored and therefore liable to be hacked. I don't know what they do with this data. There is no clear information on their website. I have not been able to find any articles, but they have this data, and it can be used from anywhere from training AI models, or it could just be kept and be a hazard, a future security hazard, to any bad actors or any potential hack in the future. I also know that these services are based off of subscription models, for lack of a better term. So I would highly encourage this council to, when it comes time to renew the contract, to decline that, something Austin, Texas has already done. They tried to use these cameras, and after a year, they declined renewing the contract. That is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Corey Haynes, 30160 O'Hurst Drive. First tonight, I wanted to thank you, all the council, the mayor and council, for your work, and especially the work of the Arts Board for the recent concerts in the park and the Trail Tunes event. These were all fantastic events with great turnout. I was proud to be a sponsor of Trail Tunes this year. Second, I want to commend some of our amazing students here in Madison Heights. That will be some of our future leaders. Four Boy Scouts from Troops 1589 and 1627 have completed or are nearly finished with their Eagle Scout projects. James Kramer completed a blood drive at the Madison Heights Fire Station, where enough blood was drawn to save 57 lives. Henry Kramer completed building over 150 bird-suit feeders for the Red Oaks Nature Center for them to use in future training for Boy Scouts. Landon Sanborn worked to donate over 700 food items to the Madison Heights Food Pantry, along with including $1,500 in donations to purchase more items for the pantry. Tanner Langdon built an outdoor classroom for the students to use at Page Middle School. I would love counsel and everybody here just to join me in congratulating these future leaders for their hard work, determination, and their collaboration in performing these tasks for our great city here in Madison Heights. Lastly, I want to commend all of the neighbors that showed up today to speak their minds. This is the way it's supposed to work, that they can come in, they can talk in front of our council, they can give their beliefs and what they feel is the reasons they moved to Madison Heights in the first place, and I'm just glad to see that continuing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Yeah, please.
Any to talk to this?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Randy Witorp. I am the president of Mount Zion Lutheran Church, and soon-to-be school, I hope. We're on number two on the agenda today, like, since I'm speaking to you guys, so... Hello. I just want to say that our intent is to be as good a neighbors as we possibly can. You know, we are... My children will be going to this school, my pastor's children will be going there. We're very excited about the project. The existing building, we're putting a lot of work into bringing a lot of improvements to some long-neglected maintenance items around the property, and we continue to do that going forward and to be as good a neighbors as we can. I don't know if we take questions later during the portion...
Right now, this is just public comment about anything.
Okay, great.
We'll eventually get to your specific...
Sounds great. Well, thank you for your time, and I look forward to addressing any future questions I have.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Naumann. I'm pastor at Mount Zion Lutheran Church. I'm Randy's pastor there. And I'm here to talk about the school as well, and our plan to open a Christian day school in 510 West Gerard. So we are new to the neighborhood there. We recently purchased the church building at the end of May, but we are not new to Madison Heights. We've been here since 2017, and God has really blessed us in this community, and we really enjoy this community. We were very happy that we could find a larger facility for our church in Madison Heights, and we didn't have to go anywhere. We could continue to invest here. I've met Alice, and we met at our church, and you warned me about the poison ivy, and talked about your butterflies and milkweed that you've been working on over there. So we appreciate that. I think we share some of the same concerns that you have, certainly concerned about your fence line and your dog, and we want to keep up good relations with you, and we're certainly willing to handle anything that comes up in a very neighborly fashion. We are, as far as your concern about children, we are trying to... You know, we're trying to bring in children. We love the sounds of children playing and children learning in our church and in our school, and we're excited to see what Madison Heights can bring to our school and what we can bring to Madison Heights, and how God will bless us here in this building for years to come. So hopefully, no matter how this goes tonight or in the future, we can keep up good relations as neighbors. And I think I'm interested in also some of the same things that this woman was saying about peace and enjoyment and stability, and those are things which we think our school can bring to not only the community of Madison Heights, but also our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment. We're going to move to the consent agenda. The only item on that is the regular meeting minutes from August 26th. So can I get a motion to approve, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no, motion carries. Then we're going to move on to our reports. The first one is from the city manager. This is a request to waive the permit, engineering, and inspection fees for the Red Oak Park or Ambassador Park project.
When projects are funded internally or supported by city-managed grants, it's our standard practice to waive internal permitting fees without council action. This is because fees simply just shift from one department to another with no overall financial impact. The Red Oaks Park project is slightly different. It's funded entirely by Oakland County with a $7.2 million investment with no financial obligation to the city. The only request is that the city waive permit, engineering, and inspection fees. Charging those fees would reduce the funds available for direct project work, which ultimately would benefit our residents. Because this project is funded solely by an outside partner, the waiver of fees falls outside our typical, normal procedure and therefore requires formal council action. Approving the waiver is consistent with the past practice of city-owned and grant-funded projects, as well as projects that we have partnered with in Oakland County. I also have followed up with other communities that are doing similar work in, and the fees are being waived in those communities as well. For these reasons, we respectfully request that council support the waiving of applicable community development fees for permitting, engineering, and inspection for the Red Oaks Park project, which also is known to everyone as Ambassador Park.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion from council to approve, please?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council formally waives all city-related permanent engineering and inspection fees associated with the Red Oak Park project.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
All support.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just, I'm happy to see that this project has been going forward for the residents who live in that area. It's been ongoing for quite a while, so anything we can do to help speed this along in the right direction, I'm all for.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no, motion carries. Then we have the special land use PSP 25-04. This is the 510 West Gerard Avenue, the private K-8 school.
So the applicant Mount Zion Evangelical Lutheran Church requests special land use approval from the Planning Commission and City Council under Section 1505 of the Madison Heights zoning ordinance to operate a private K-8 school at 510 West Gerard Avenue, zoned R2, one-family residential. The property is located at the northwest corner of West Gerard Avenue and Barrington Street, a northwest highway. The school is proposed to operate out of a wing of the existing church building, which Mount Zion will also continue to use for religious services. In the R2 zoning district, K-12 public and private schools are permitted through special land use process. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the request, subject to the following conditions. The operation of the school, including enrollment, hours of operation, grade levels, et cetera, shall substantially comply with the project narrative submitted. Any modifications would need to be reviewed and determined if a new land use review permit is required. A one-way do-not-enter sign shall be installed at the southern Barrington Street driveway to ensure one-way circulation. An ancillary site improvement, such as playground equipment or sports fields, shall be reviewed through the Technical Review Committee via minor site plan process. And transitional landscaping shall be added along the western and northern property line. Motions are included in your packet. If you need wording or if you have any questions, we have the applicant with us tonight, as they've already introduced themselves.
All right, thank you. Can I please get a motion from council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Give me a second. I move that council approve the special land use request PSP 25-04 at 510 West Gerard Avenue for the private K-8 school to include the requirements listed by the Planning Commission. That's what I have right now.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I will support.
Thank you. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I do have questions. I know that Alice came today with her concerns. We've seen other concerns submitted through the Planning Commission. You know, I think that as it is currently, it's not changing the character of the site in specifics, like, as in, they're not building a new building, they're not tearing it down, and any additions to the property beyond what is included here in the special land use request application would have to go through a review committee. I think it's going to be important for our applicants to make sure that they maintain good relationships with their neighbors. I think that is the utmost importance here. And I think, you know, there are schools in other neighborhoods. We have, like, Four Corners, that is over here on Herbert Street, within the neighborhood near Rosie's Park. And, you know, that school has grown exponentially since it began, and it impacts the neighborhood somewhat. I love that school, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying it's wrong for it to be there, but I think that the importance cannot be overstated, and how important it's going to be for you as good neighbors to make sure that you're maintaining those relationships with the neighbors. I know that there is the long fence line on Alice's property. There's also other fence lines that have, you know, dogs and things like that. I would love to, if that's okay, Your Honor, to ask, you know, what are the... In addition, if there's any addition, but, you know, the thought behind how are we going to protect the children at the school and the neighbors who would incur liability if children, you know, scale a fence or jump a fence? Because, look, I've got three kids. They move fast, and they can get away from you quickly. What is your plan for helping to maintain that relationship and prevent any issues with your neighbors?
If you'd like to go to the podium and address that, thank you.
Those are really good questions. I've actually been thinking about them now, and my wife is actually responsible for putting together kind of a cohesive and comprehensive plan for a number of different landscaping improvements that we want to make. So I think a lot of it is going to be introducing additional plants and shrubs, what do we need to do to kind of increase the distance of the barrier between open space where the children would be and where the existing fence is. I mean, I'm open to any suggestions or working with our neighbors if there are, like, different sorts of preferences they have about that, if there are things that they know of that they'd like addressed. You know, we're new neighbors, so the main thing is that we want to make sure whatever we're doing is, you know, mutually beneficial and, you know, in the best interest of everybody involved.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up.
Yeah.
Is that okay? I... Just because I know Alice.
Yeah.
I know her wonderful yard is full of beautiful native plants and things like that. I would recommend that you make sure that you put in native gardens in that area, especially since it is a high... The water table, I think, is really high there, and it gets flooded really easily. Make sure that you use plants and things like that that take that into consideration when you're considering what to do there.
I'm really excited you brought that up. My wife and I do a lot of rain gardening, and also prioritize indigenous plants, so that would be fully the intent, things that are going to contribute to local pollinators, local wildlife, and that's all going to be part of what we do. Like, as few... Like, well, no invasives, or like, but really as few non-natives as possible. So that's absolutely part of the plan.
Thank you.
And Alice, you do have a beautiful yard.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Any other... Oh, Alice, he's there. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone in council have any questions for him?
Yeah, and I did have one, just a curious one, might be out of place. So what is... Is there, like, a five-year plan for this property? I know you're taking occupancy, but what is the long-term plan for this property?
The 25 students is kind of like the optimistic, really more five-to-10-year plan. So that's, like, what you see on paper right there is really even further out than, like, five-to-10-year plan for us is really what we're thinking about. We intend to... Right now, there's not really much that we need to change about the existing property to meet the requirements that we have. So, yeah, we're a growing church, and so this is just like our next big step. So this is just like year one out of, you know, the hopefully many years to continue using the property, mostly as is.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, Ms. McHag, if you want to go to the podium and ask a question specific to the... You need to go to the podium.
Mine is really just a comment. It's a comment about the dogs. I talked to Emily about this earlier today. I have a rescue dog, and that's one of my concerns, is, you know, children reaching through the fence. But I know that there are at least two houses on the north boundary who also have dogs. And the house that faces Barrington, Jennifer told me that they're a little concerned because they have a six-foot fence, and they have a four-foot fence, and they have a dog. And they're concerned about, you know, interactions with their dog. In between or behind them is a... Seems kind of weird to say, but an old man, who has three dogs. One of them belongs, I think, to his nephew, who is in some legal difficulties right now. And that dog keeps jumping over the fence. So he... We have found the dog running around. So, he, we have found the dog running around the churchyard, and he's, he just has, is having a hard time keeping the dog contained in the yard. So, I really, this is just a warning to you that when you have children out there, you have to be very careful about this dog.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions from council? So, I'm inclined to vote in favor of this. There isn't really any way to enforce what I'm going to say next, but I'm inclined to vote in favor of this with the understanding that the church is going to work with their new neighbors, and it sounds like they are. They sound like they are very willing to do this. And it doesn't sound like the neighbors are particularly against having the church in the school there. There are just some concerns which are legit, I'm a parent, my children are older, you know, but I remember, you know, and it is a concern, you know. Kids like to climb things, you know, a dog gets loose, a kid, something goes over the fence, they're just going to climb it and get it because it's the easiest thing to do. And so, making sure that when the children are out, I expect that there is going to be an adult supervising them, you know, and just making sure of all these things. So, I'm inclined to, I'm going to be voting yes on this, but I strongly urge the church to talk with their new neighbors and come up with ways to take care of these ideas. You know, the saying, "Good fences make good neighbors." It sounds to me that having good fences here is really going to solve the bulk of these issues. And I expect that if a ball or whatever goes over into the yard, Alice will bring it back. It might not be right away, but you will get it back. So, and I expect the other neighbors as well. So, just, you know, just with that, I guess I'll take a vote on this. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, so motion carries. Congratulations, and welcome to your new home in Madison Heights. Next up, we have another special land use. This is PSP 25-05, the 28767 Dartmouth Street. This is parking as a principal use.
The applicant and property owner, Nature Companies, who's here tonight to address council as well, has requested special land use approval under Sections 10.06 and 15.05 of the Madison Heights zoning ordinance to develop a parking lot and drive aisle as a principal use of a residential parcel. The intent is for the parking lot and drive aisle to serve as the proposed restaurant and development on the adjacent property to the west. The subject site is 28767 Dartmouth Street, which is currently zoned R3, one-family residential. Under Section 10.06, parking as a principal use on a residential parcel requires special land use approval with additional use-specific standards. While related to the proposed restaurant, the restaurant use itself is not part of the special land use request. The Planning Commission previously have recommended denial of this request, citing issues with the site plan. In response, the applicant has revised the site plan to address these commission findings, and in addition, held the public hall, public town hall meeting to discuss with the residents. A revised concept plan has been submitted to staff on August 28, 2025, as is included in your packet and has been shared with council. Given these updates, the staff recommends that City Council postpone action on the special land use until October the 13th council meeting, and remand the revised supplemental back to the Planning Commission for further review and recommendation at their September 16, 2025 meeting. If the council chooses not to remand these back to the Planning Commission, there are two alternatives. One, to approve the special land use based on the revised concept plan submitted on August the 28th, and two, to deny the special land use. And we do have those concepts as well.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor? I move that council postpones action on the special land use request, number PSP 2505, to the October 13th meeting, and remand the case back to the Planning Commission for further consideration.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor? All support.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I'm just going to say, I don't see any world where this makes sense to me for the neighborhood. I need the Planning Commission to review all of the new information, but I'm just saying that right now, I don't see any world where this makes sense for the safety and, you know, consistency for the neighborhood that it is proposed in.
All right, thank you. Any other comments?
Clapping for her.
No other comments? Do you have any comments?
I did, I did have, but they were clapping, so I wanted to let it happen, let it be natural. I'm not, I was just going to say, I 100% agree on sending it back. It seemed like, I've been following this whole thing throughout the entire process. I mean, we're all familiar with where Marinelli's used to be, in that alleyway, and how it all works. And we, I think the thing that I love most about watching this process kind of transpire was that it seems like there's compromise happening in some ways. I know everybody's not happy, but it seems like there's some talks that are happening. And so, I think if there were some discussions had, it would make sense to send it back to the planning board. I did talk to the planning board chair to try and understand. I know the last meeting, I heard it was like five hours, so I wanted to understand what was discussed there. So, I think that this is the best choice, just to try and get some finality to this. Send it back.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to say, I know that everybody is here in support or not in support of this change, and you can also email all of us on council, you know, we have emails. I also have a phone, a cell phone that I take calls on. You can call me directly and discuss this at your own time. And so, I'm really wanting to hear what you have to say about, you know, before we make any decisions on this accordingly. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any other? Okay, so, yeah, I think this needs to go back to planning. Planning Commission is tasked with these types of items. And so, generally, this goes to planning, and then they can recommend to council to deny or to approve, and ultimately, we're the ones who make the decision. But planning is the one who really takes the time. And when we are doing the master plan, and when we were updating our zoning and ordinances, our maps, Planning Commission, we were the ones who took all the time to do that. And so, that's what's going on with this, which is why the meeting was so long, was there, it wasn't just this, there were a number of issues that were on that. So, I will be voting to send this back to planning as well. So, with that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. This is going to go back to planning. And...
Is that an open meeting?
That is. So, I believe it's going to be, is it just next week? September the 16th? Okay, so, September 16th, so a week tomorrow.
Is it 5:30 to 7:00?
It's 5:30. Starts at 5:30. And so, that will be going out. So, if you were at the last meeting, then, you know, bring your issues there again, voice your concerns again. Next up, we have, so we have the alley vacation request, PEE 25-01, the 17-foot wide alley between 601 West 12 Mile Road and 28767 Dartmouth.
The Community and Economic Development Department has received a petition to vacate the 17-foot wide improved alley right-of-way located between 1601 West 12 Mile Road and 28767 Dartmouth Road. This alley also provides access to the property at 611 West 12 Mile, and all adjacent property owners have signed the petition. Staff recommends that City Council establish a public hearing date of October the 13th, 2025, at which time updated letters will be provided from the impacted utility companies and the DPS. City Council may also choose to refer this alley vacation request to the Planning Commission for further study and recommendation. If council remands the related special use case PSP 2509 back to the Planning Commission, staff further recommends that this alley vacation request be referred at the same time for review and comment. So, that was the case that you just referred back to the Planning Commission. In any case, staff advises that City Council act on special land use case PSP 2509 before taking final action on the alley vacation request.
Okay, so what is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I move that council remands the special, what is it called? Alley vacation, PEE 2301 at 601 West 12 Mile Road and 28767 Dartmouth Street, back to the Planning Commission for review and comment.
I think you need to also set the public hearing for October the 13th.
And set a public hearing for October 13th.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Support.
All right, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just a point of clarification. I was a little confused when I read this. It refers to PSP 25-09, isn't it, -05? -05 is the one we just referred back.
Oh, I think it is 05.
So, I was racking my brain trying to figure out what 25-09 was. But I assumed it was just a typo.
Yeah, it's 05 instead of 09.
Thank you.
It's the same case that we just referred back.
Yep. Thank you. I'll be in support of doing that, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, any other? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. Motion carries. All right. And then, we have bid award purchases. This is the scheduled replacement of backhoe number 455.
The approved fiscal year 2026 budget includes funding for the scheduled replacement of backhoe 455, which is a 2006 John Deere in the Water and Sewer Division. This unit is nearly 20 years old and has a poor condition analysis of 33, which warrants priority replacement. Staff is also considering the replacement of backhoe 407, which is a 2004 CAT in the Streets Division. This machine has an even lower condition analysis of 46, and is due for priority replacement as well. Operationally, the department no longer requires two backhoes, and therefore recommends trading in both of these existing units to purchase a single replacement rather than attempting to replace them both. Staff recommends the following actions. First, to award the purchase of one Caterpillar 420 XC backhoe, as quoted by McAllister CAT of Novi, in the amount of $176,611.83 through Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. And second, to approve the trade-in of a water and sewer unit 455 for $30,000, and street unit 407 for $20,000 to McAllister, which will reduce the overall cost to $126,611.83. And last, to approve a transfer of the $20,000 from the Water and Sewer Fund to the Streets Fund for the cross-departmental trade-in value.
All right, thank you. What is the wish of council?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Here we go. I'd like to make a motion to award the purchase of one Caterpillar 420 XC backhoe, as quoted to McAllister CAT and Novi, in the amount of $176,611.83 through the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Also, do we have to make separate motions, or all is one?
You can make it all together.
Okay. Also, to approve the trade-in of water sewer unit number 455 for $30,000, and street unit 407 for $20,000, reducing the total cost of the replacement value to $126,611.83. Additionally, to approve the transfer of $20,000 from the Water and Sewer Fund to Street Funds to account for the cross-department trade-in value.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor?
All support. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, since that last point is that modifying the budget, so are we going to need a super vote on that?
Actually, it is a budget, it would be a budget amendment.
Just keep in mind that we need five votes if we couple them all together.
So, everybody.
Um, are there any other comments or questions? I will be voting yes for this, so there's at least one vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. All right, it passes 5-0. And then, finally, ordinance 2205, city-initiated rezonings, PRZN 25-01, 25-02, 25-03, 25-04, 25-06 first reading. 25-05 is not included in that.
The city of Madison Heights is initiating a proactive rezoning of several qualified properties to RMN, which is residential mixed neighborhood, RMF, residential multifamily, and MUI-2, which is mixed-use innovation 2, or B1 neighborhood district. The purpose of these rezonings is to better align zoning with existing land use patterns, the city's master plan, and adjacent street networks. This process is intended to increase opportunities for building expansion and development while ensuring that all current uses remain permitted. The following properties are included in this rezoning request. 555 East 13 Mile Road, 1434 East 13 Mile Road, 30801 Dequender Road, 1042 East 12 Mile Road, and eastern 130 feet of 30728 John R. Road. The Planning Commission has recommended that case PRZN 2505, which is located at 500 West Gardenia Avenue, be withdrawn for further analysis. Staff recommends that City Council conduct the first reading of ordinance 2205, covering PRZN 2501 through 2504 and PRZN 2506, and schedule the second and final reading for September the 29th, 2025 council meeting.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor, unless you'd like to, go ahead. I move that council approves ordinance number 2205, PRZN 2501 through 25-04 and PRZN 25-06, and schedule the second and final reading for September 29th council meeting.
All right, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
Thank you. All right, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Counsel, we're back to you next.
Okay. So, I want to note, I'd like to note for our gathered guests here tonight, and anybody watching later, so all of these properties are currently church buildings, correct? So, you know, the, when we're talking about rezoning these, the church or, you know, religious institution that is in that property can continue until they are no longer a church or until, forever, right? So, that's their, that's the property, that doesn't change that at all. I would love to hear from Matt about, you know, our, what that will look like. So, let's say one of these churches disbands, and they sell their property to the developer. Many of these are on main roads, so it was understandable, the one on Gardenia, which is right inside the neighborhood, is a different story, but many of these are on main roads. You know, what is the potential, when we talk about them in the residential multifamily, mixed-use innovation, it's hard to understand. So, I would love to hear from you about, like, what is in our master plan that would make these properties potentially interesting to developer if they are rezoned in this way?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Rebek, and thank you, council. The intent, just to back up for everyone's kind of information, is our old zoning ordinance, which we had for 50 or so years, only allowed religious institutions in two zoning districts. There was a single-family residential zoning district and office zoning district. So, over time, as properties around them, especially on the main roads, John R., 12 Mile, 13 Mile, developed, the zoning changed. However, these properties were essentially locked into their single-family zoning designation, which, as we know, you know, these major roads, it may not be appropriate now for a single-family development. So, what staff is proposing is aligning these properties. The new zoning ordinance allows religious institutions, clubs, any type of assembly use in a greater number of districts. So, what staff proposes to do, and this is guided by council as well, is to realign these properties with what's actually around them now, the zoning and the future land use around them now. So, on 13 Mile, for example, we have two properties that are currently zoned single-family residential, but they're adjacent to a lot of multifamily developments, a lot of multifamily residential apartment complexes. So, the new zoning district does not zone out or does not make these churches non-conforming, but if a new development came... but if a new development came in or if the church went away for some reason and it was sold, it would allow a development that's similar to what's already around it. In those cases, a multifamily or a townhome-style development. We have a couple of commercial properties, one on Dequinder and one, which is the back half of an already-zoned commercial property. Those are commercial future land uses. So a developer, if they came in and the church, you know, decided to move or went away, they would already be zoned appropriately for a type of development that's planned for that site. The one on Gardenia is a little bit of an outlier, which is why it was pulled away. That's the only one that was really more in a traditional residential neighborhood, which we think warrants more study and analysis as part of the master plan.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for planner? All right, thanks, Matt. All right, any other comments? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those who can't say no. Motion carries. And with that, I invite closing comments, starting with Counselwoman Mear.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and voicing your concerns, and we will do our best to listen. And like we've decided tonight here, we're going to send that back for a little more investigation. So I think that's the right thing to do in this case, and I appreciate all of your comments tonight. Couple of things, I like to walk the neighborhoods with my lovely and charming dog, who does not take no for an answer when it's time to go for a walk. And I've noticed that there's a lot of use of the new garbage cans and recycling, which is fantastic. Just a couple of reminder on those. Handle towards the house, mouth towards the street. The new trucks have like an arm or a claw that actually comes down and grabs the garbage can, so you'll need to leave some room in between your cans. I saw a lot of cans, like, right next to each other. It's not going to work. They got to have about three feet space in between them so the little arm can grab them. I mentioned, I live on a thirteen house street. The truck came down and most of my neighbors had their cans out correctly, and he did thirteen houses in about a minute. Just whipped down the street, grabbed them, emptied them, and kept going. One thing cute, I know there's some concerns over being able to wheel these. Again, I am partially handicapped. I do okay. Of my thirteen houses on my street, the majority of us are elderly, senior folks, and my neighbors have started something cute where a few of them only put out a very small bag of garbage, so they've kind of started taking turns of collecting the garbage and putting all two, three, or four little bags into one, and that person wheels it out, and the next week they take turns. So it's going to help save the city money, and that's my financial concern with some of the Fed cuts that are coming. I know it's going to be a bit of a difference. I was luckily enough to rearrange my garage a little bit, so that recycle bin sits right outside my door from my house, and I'm finding that I'm recycling more than I had it in the past, things that I just didn't take the time to throw into the smaller recycle bins. I'm throwing into that bigger bin, so that is one of the desires of going to these cans. So a lot of fun stuff still going on in Madison Heights. Summer might be over, but we've got a lot of cool stuff going on. We've mentioned some of the stuff the Arts Board was up to this past weekend, and Counselor Wright, who I'm sure will discuss some of the fun stuff going on this weekend, as we have alluded to. So that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, yes. Fun stuff is afoot, friends. Start Your Engines this week is Revving in the Heights, and I am incredibly excited to get that kicked off. The Human Relations and Equity Commission has partnered with the Fire Department to host their open house along with the car show. I've been advertising to folks as we're going to have some Backdraft-type stuff going on, but nobody really gets that reference, it's a movie from the eighties called Backdraft. Check it out when you get a minute. But the car show goes from ten to three o'clock. Oakland County Board of Commissions is one of our sponsors. They're going to, the Oakland County Parks is going to bring out, I think it's called a bounce blaster. Still trying to figure out what that means. I want to say AKA a bounce house, but better. So we're going to have a Lego set for kids to play with. There's going to be a group that's going to be building model Lego sets and have Lego sets for kids to play with. That's for our adults who have cars that don't want the kids to play with their cars. There's going to be three food trucks that are going to come out, in addition to a host of a variety of cars. I've seen the list of the cars that have signed up. We have everything from like, you know, I think I, don't quote me on this one, I'm pretty sure I saw a Model T on the list, but everything from that to Ferraris and everything in between, nineteen-sixties, seventies, eighties, whatever your favorite music is, is going to be out there. This is a free event. Everyone is welcome to come. We have stuff for the kids to do, stuff for the adults to do, to look at the cars, and there's going to be multiple awards. There's a fire chief's award, there's a police chief award, there's the mayor's award, there's a city council award. So this is a great event. Last year was phenomenal. The thing I love most about it was it drew out some of our car culture people, which we have a lot of in the city, who have cars in their garages, and so I'm excited to see more this year. I want to encourage you guys to come out. I think it's going to be a great event. Our chamber is involved. I know we got the head of our chamber back there. Our police, I was told that they have a diplomat, which is going to be there. Our biggest, one of our biggest sponsors, Priority Waste, is going to have, they are partners with Penske, so they're going to bring out a Grand Prix car to display for us to see. In addition to, they're going to have a touch truck, the National Guard, the National Guard is coming out with another touch truck. So it's going to be a phenomenal event, and again, it's free, open to the public, ten to three. I recommend you come on out, see a car, tell us which one is your favorite cars, and check that out. Additionally to that, or outside of that, something that I've been a part of, and I think it's something that, you know, if you haven't noticed lately, there's a lot that sometimes it's hard to agree on at times. Like, I might say to Bill, "Man, it's cold outside." And he's like, "Cold? What are you talking about? Super hot." So to help kind of bridge that gap and to have some things that were neutral and not related to things to disagree on, there's a scream club on Tuesday nights now at the Hill. So it's not associated with anyone or anything, it's not for any nefarious persons. You literally go to the top of the Hill at seven-thirty, let out a collective scream, take a breath, and for some of us, we take a couple breaths, because I'm asthmatic. So you take a breath, and then we do it again, and then we do it a third time. And the whole idea is just to collectively, just let it go. Just let it go and relax and like, just have a minute. If you want, you can talk to people. If you don't, you can just go home. Last time, it was awesome. Some people came, they screamed, and they left. Other people hung around. But everyone is welcome. Again, it's not associated with anyone or anything, so feel free to come on out. And finally, you know, last meeting, I forgot something that someone reminded me of, and Shawn Fleming has it, Counselwoman Fleming has it on his mug there, but I know sometimes we can disagree on minute things or very critical things, so it's like what goes next to our house, but I just wanted to remind us all to remember to be kind. We're all just doing our damn best, and we're all trying. So let's remember that, and let's remember that we all have our own things that we're struggling with, and to lend that kindness to others, because they're struggling with something too or having a long workday, so please remember to be kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything from the attorney's office this evening?
Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh, anything from the, Samantha?
I got a few things. Happy birthday to Mark Bliss. That's why he isn't here, but I understand he's turning forty and moaning already. I have a reminder that the next meeting is not September the twenty-second, it's September the twenty-ninth, so mark your calendars for planning on coming. And in October, the time of the council meeting is changing from seven-thirty to six-thirty. We're going to start an hour earlier, except for tree lighting night, it will still be at seven-thirty. I want to thank the Arts Board for Trail Tunes. That was a great event. The weather could have been a tad warmer, but they have no control over that. And two events that I want to remind everyone of, we're having a downtown touchdown on October the sixth at the Eleven Mile Streetscape.
The fourth. October fourth.
That's on Saturday. And then the Harvest Festival at Rosie's the following Saturday, which used to take place at the Nature Center, so there will be donuts, pumpkin painting, all the things we think about when we think about fall.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I forgot something critically important. You should not mention it. The Police Department is having an informal meeting on October fifteenth for Police Reserves. It's going to be from six to seven in the police auditorium. If you're interested, contact Sergeant Schram. I believe he was in the back of the room. He was, but he just left. My apologies. He gave me a note to say that first thing, and then I got excited about Revving in the Heights. But it's an informal meeting about becoming a police reserve, so October fifteenth, six to seven p.m.
Thank you.
Oh, there he goes.
Sergeant Schram, do you want to take a moment to talk about it? The reserve meeting?
Sure, thank you. For those who do not know me, I'm sorry, I'm Steve Schram. I'm with the Madison Heights Police Department. I am in charge of the reserve program. We are looking to get some, more people involved in the reserve program. It's a program that augments the Madison Heights Police Department. They do several activities for us, whether it's parades, Fourth of July, going to football games, basketball games, community outreach stuff, like going to the parks, doing park checks, housing checks. So we're looking for more people to join our program. If you're interested, you can go to the Madison Heights City Department, City of Madison Heights website, look for the Police Department, go to the reserves, fill out the application. I'll review it, do a background check, then we do an interview, and we'll go from there. So if anyone is interested in joining the Madison Heights Police Department Reserve Program, please go to the website. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Just a reminder that we have a city election on November fourth. Early voting starts on Saturday, October twenty-fifth, at the Royal Oaks Senior Center, or if you want to vote absentee, ballots will be available soon. Those that have signed up for a ballot already should receive theirs by the last week of September, the first part of October. That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Rebaq?
I do want to reiterate that Revving in the Heights and the fire station open house, it's going to be a really fun day, so please come out and join us that day. And thank you to Counselor Wright for all of his work, as well as the members of the HREC who put a ton of work into this, so thank you so much. The Community Connect from the Fire Department is very exciting. I know that I have two pets. I know that my parents live nearby, and they've got, they don't have any pets, but there's, you know, wheelchair use and accessibility issues, and EMS knows my dad really well, but it's important for these things to have, to be notified, and the moments that they would have to do to, I find out what the situation is there can be life-or-death moments. So I really encourage everybody here, but everybody listening and watching, to go and sign up for that Community Connect, because it can be a really important thing for you and your family. I just want to say two more things. One is my twin boys have their twelfth birthday on Wednesday, so I want to say happy birthday to Eric and Evan for, you're great, and I love you, and I'm so proud of you. And the other thing that I want to say is, we recently adopted a puppy, and so have recently started using the Madison Heights Red Oaks Dog Park quite often, pretty much every day. We're out there using it and loving it. It's a wonderful community of people from Madison Heights, but from all over the region that use that dog park. There is a, I forgot what they're calling it, but a special Halloween dress-up your dog and take it to the dog park on the thirtieth, and it's free, it's fun, and it'll be a lot of fun, so I would encourage anybody who does, likes to dress up their dogs like I do, to bring your dog out and participate that. And I want to make sure we talk about the dog park in Oakland County in just a few minutes after we're done, so don't leave without me. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselwoman Fleming?
Yeah. First of all, I want to say thank you for all of you, everyone who's came out tonight to the meeting, and it's important that you voice your concerns on the issues that mean the most. I think your input to me and everyone else is greatly appreciative, and it helps us make well-informed decisions about the community and its future. Also, I want to say that the Value Center at Fourteen Mile, there's been some talk about that, that's becoming a holiday market in the future. I don't know the date that it's going to be opening up, but that's going to be changed to holiday market. I went to the Trail Tunes event, that was last Saturday, had a really great time. We, there was a lot of new bands that attended the Trail Tunes, and even though it was kind of cool and felt like fall, it was a great event. And also that we were able to judge, and that, you know, it felt like kind of a cool thing for the council to be judges there, so. Also, this, coming up this Thursday on September the eleventh at seven p.m., the Boy Scouts are going to be having a nine-eleven service at seven p.m. at the fire station, again, and I hope that everybody can come out and participate and support the Boy Scouts, the Fire Department, first responders, and everyone who serves in that capacity, whether you're a nurse or, you know, first responders. And then I also want to commend the four Boy Scouts who are mentioned on all their projects. My brother was an Eagle Scout, I was in the Boy Scouts also, and it takes a lot to do these projects. A lot of support goes behind it, the whole entire family's involved, and it's a lot of time put in, not just for the project, but just also, scouting becomes like your entire life, and you make a lot of memorable friends for a lifetime, so that's all I have for tonight.
All right, thank you. I want to thank Counselwoman Mear for starting off closing comments, telling a story about community. I mean, that's what good neighbors are. That was a perfect example of what good neighbors are. And, you know, and I know that people with the large toads, if they know that someone has an issue with them, they're helping them. When our toads were delivered, two of my neighbors were away, and one of the other neighbors just went and knew they were away and took them and put them in the back, so they weren't just sitting there for the next week while they were gone. So it's about being a good neighbor, and there's lots of ways you can be good neighbors, and a good fence is one of those ways. So, but, you know, just communicating, and so thank you for starting off closing comments with that story. With respect to the church rezoning, just to give a little bit of background on this, we had someone who wanted to start a daycare at the church on Fourteen Mile, which is great, you know, who's going to say no to a daycare? Well, it wasn't as easy as that, and she had to spend a lot of time, she had to get, she had to spend a lot of time with our staff, she had to hire a lawyer, to go through this really lengthy, expensive process to change the zoning to become a daycare. And so we said, let's make this change. You know, Mark Bliss, who's on the Planning Commission with me, said, why don't we see what we can do to make it easier in the future? So by making these changes, nothing changes for the current churches, but if in the future one of the churches does want to sell to whomever, it's a lot easier. And with respect to the property on Gardenia, it's not on a main street the way that the others are. It is a different situation, so that one was pulled and that one will be addressed on its own, and it will be addressed with a lot of input from the neighboring residents. So just want to put that out there. I want to thank Consumers Energy and the Arts Board. Couple of weeks ago, Consumers Energy hosted a family fun night at Civic Park. They did it just before the last concert. It was great. I was able to go out, see a lot of residents people I hadn't seen in a while, meet a few new people, and then it ended with a concert, and that weather was beautiful. Not that we can control the weather, but that was, it was great. It was a great way to end our concert series, and I'm really looking forward to next year. And it was great for Consumers Energy to see us using the band shell. You know, they gave us the money to put in this band shell, and we are definitely using that. Just want to shout out to Consumers Energy and thank them for that. Also want to give recognition to the Chinese Community Center. They had their twentieth anniversary on the weekend, just, and I was there just before Trail Tunes, and it was interesting, because I remember being there almost ten years ago when they were starting a garden. They wanted to start a garden, and it was basically a patch of dirt, and, you know, they were telling me their grand ideas on what they wanted to do, and if you go there now, it's a greenhouse, and they've got a little path in there, they are definitely growing, they're selling, and they're giving away some of their produce, and they've been hosting for a number of years a Healthy Gardening Expo. So it's something that started very small, and it's expanded, and over the years, I've had the privilege of attending many of the celebrations that they have there, and I really appreciate that. But one of the other things that I realized as well is But one of the other things that I realized as well is that it's not just the fun times. I was also with them during some scary times. We had some times a few years ago where there was a lot of anti-Asian hate, and the community was extremely scared, and I reached out to them, and I was able to talk to them, and we were able to, I was able to bring the now-former police chief to talk to them and just work with them so that they felt safe, because it's lots of fun, lots of great celebrations, and I really enjoyed that time, but a lot of that is based as well in the fact that it's not just the fun times, it's also the serious things. And we do a lot of fun events here, you know, we're talking about Revan in the Heights, we're talking about Trail Tunes and the concert, but tonight, we had residents who are like, "Yeah, it's great that we have these concerts, but I'm really concerned about what's being built next to my house." Like, that's what's important to our residents. You know, I can go to Royal Oak to go to an event, but when I come home, I'm going to my home here in Madison Heights, and I wanna make sure that what's surrounding me, that I'm in somewhere that is safe, where I'm somewhere that's comfortable. So I think it's really important that our residents recognize that as well, that that is what our job is, you know, as much as we do the fun things, it's about doing what's important. It's, you know, I know there was talk about a splash pad, I don't know anyone who moves to a city because there's a splash pad. You move to a city because you feel safe, because you feel comfortable, because you have neighbors like Mr. Muir was talking about, so just want everyone to keep that in mind. Our next meeting is going to be on Monday, September twenty-ninth, the time is eight-fifty-nine, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.